Today is Wednesday, November 20th, 2013. The time is 10:03. The meeting of the Montague County Commission is called to order. I just want to mention, today is a significant, or this week is a significant historical week in changing so many things in our history as a country. Our freedoms and our liberties and the way our country's founded. 150th anniversary at Gettysburg Address this week. 50th anniversary of the assassination of John F. Kennedy. During our time of meditation, the pledge of the flag, I think it would be good to keep in mind that all the people that gave their lives throughout history and each and every day risked their lives. And leaders, that we keep in mind the work that was done in history and what we all need to do for the future history of this country. Would anyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation with pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For consent approval today, we have five exonerations, $3,359.92 for tax shares 2012 and 2013. fiduciary orders as of November 20th. Order on petition for removal of personal representative for the estates of Oscar and Peavy Schubert. Something you might want to approve separately. It was prepared by Pete Genardi as a result of the meeting last week, just stating what you agreed to do and allowing them to continue. So that's your signature. We have minutes of October 9 and October 23 of the regular meeting, and minutes of October 16 and October 22nd for the board review. Purchase orders and pay vouchers. General County Fund, $562,601.55. Cole Severance Fund, $36,758.95. 911, 588.76. Mason Dixon Park, 173.07. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,019.58. Assessor's valuation, $43,469. Magistrate Court, $70. Star City Tiff, $136,615.72. Monde General Tiff, $76,982.10. Morton County Industrial Park Tiff, $12,788.74. Total, $871,674.7. I have one budget revision from the prosecutor's office. Smoothing funds for legal ads and training.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Do we need a separate motion to approve this order?
Yes.
Move that we approve the order on the Schubert estate.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, thank you. Renata?
I don't think he's signed it.
We have one request for reimbursement today, JEBG grant for October 2013, $931.95.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Also have a VOCA, or VOCA grant for the Victims of Crime Act. We have a requirement certification that is required by the fiduciary department of Justice and Community Services. Just your client's present signature.
We need a motion to approve my signature.
Move for approval and authorization for the president's sign.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Renata. Okay, a letter from Jim Gaston, support of Monde River. Mr. Gaston here? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I was normally going to move it, but then I have, then I read the second part of moving the shale wastewater. My concern is, I'm going to bring on the new business, the new wastewater injection well that's going into Mason Town city limits. And I have some concerns and questions along those lines that I will bring up at a later time. And the concern being in our state now is that if they're going to put the barge and move that along there, and if it's toxic waste, would they be moving it through our county? So without, I have a concern about, because I don't know enough information yet. I don't want to blatantly say I'm for this, and then we find out later there's some more information. Is it possible we can hold off on this until we get some questions answered, which I'm going to bring up in my new business? I'm not worried about the first part where it says about, but the moving the shale wastewater, I just don't know if that means that plus other items. And that's just a concern that I have.
I agree. I think there's some unanswered questions in terms of what activity as well as impact will take place in Montague County with some of the surrounding activities.
Yeah, I have to agree too. I appreciate the letter. He did mention these letters to me and what they're doing. I think I was under the assumption that it was going to go to work session first before it came here, but I see he sent the letters and that's fine. Why don't we, why don't we just schedule a work session? And I'm not sure, probably have to start with Jim Gaston. I'm not sure who all needs to be present for this work session. But there's obviously both, all three of us have numerous questions before we would take a position on this one way or another.
It probably would be a good idea if we waited till we got a response to information that Commissioner Bloom's talking about.
And then bring everyone together at the same time. So if you want to just hold off on that and then we'll bring this up again when I bring up on the new business. How's that? So just hold off at this time if that's permitted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We might as well get them all, all the issues out on the table in work session. And to remind everybody, work sessions are public.
Right.
And we don't make any decisions in work session, but that's the time that people come forward and they can discuss issues and we discuss a lot of issues in work sessions. Okay. ResCon regarding comments for AT&amp;T telecommunications facility.
This is a letter from ResCon. They're going to be installing a telecommunications facility at Chisler Knob, and they are just asking not for the zoning or any other purpose, but unless there's a historic significance to that area.
What on earth are they going to have any towers?
Well, that would go through, they realize they need to go through other agencies for that. This is just for the historic preservation factor. And I can write back to them, making sure that they do apply the tower ordinance, right?
Yeah. So what are they looking?
I don't think they really need to do anything other than if you are aware of any historic value to Chisler's Knob.
Should we also just put that on the work session so it becomes public at the next work session? So if there's someone who would come and have a concern about it, then they could come at that time. If not, then we, you know, that just gives the public the chance to respond. Because I don't know any, I don't even know where Chisler's Knob is.
Historical significance. You know, they can go to different parties, but they may not have the information. I mean, it needs, I agree with Commissioner Bloom, we need to publicly make the public aware that if anyone has any historical significant information, that to bring it to our attention.
Okay.
And if not, then we're fine.
Do you have a map?
Yes. Yeah, I saw it.
We also have to be concerned about cemeteries too. I saw the sheriff there, that reminded me.
I was going to, I was going to ask whether there's, that there's still a group of chislers in the county.
Yeah, a lot of chislers.
Well, this is out here, there's no such.
They might tell what they have on top their knob, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put that on work session.
And we can even put that on the next work session. I mean, not this week's, but it'd have to be fine. And that way, yeah, if there's any concern.
Right. Then we get the people out. Okay, any more correspondence?
I just wanted to let you know that I have received the intergovernmental agreement from Granville through Mr. Snyder. This is, they've approved engaging our dog warden services in the city of, town of Granville. So that's the first, you're the first to respond. Thank you. I have a letter from the assessor. This is a discussion with the commission office and correspondents from the clerk's office revealed a clerical error related to the parcel identified as 71A00050006. This parcel is owned by Smith Rentals LLC and was reviewed by the Board of Assessment Appeals held on October 22nd. Clerical error that occurred was that the 2012 value was incorrectly entered in place of the 2013 value. Minutes from the hearing reflect the correct values and orders. This letter is intended to request an amendment to the board orders so that they reflect the minutes as recorded for the Board of Assessment for October 22nd.
Are they saying the order is wrong? Or the way, the way it read, it sounded like what we did was correct.
But they submitted the wrong form.
But they submitted the wrong form.
I would have a concern that any decision-making changing without the taxpayer present make during that process, to give an opportunity to voice their position. If it's just that it was a typographical or if it was just a clerical error, that's a difference.
Revealed a clerical error. This was discovered, Janet was doing the minutes, I believe.
Debbie just wrote the 2012 amount on the back of your order instead of 2012.
Oh, then that's a clerical error.
But the official record shows the, no change.
I don't have any problem with that. I would move that we correct the clerical error.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. We'll just have her do another order, correct the clerical error.
And I also have from Kelly, requests the associate hypothecation agreement with MBB, and this is reducing the securities by $2 million that it is still, we're still covered. This doesn't need your signature, just your approval, and that's signed by the share.
Right.
Reducing securities.
Second.
I hate to reduce security. Everybody gets all afraid when security's reduced. Kelly shaking her head like you're an idiot.
We can revisit it in two months. We need to raise it back up. But this will give us at least a million dollars over what we, the coverage over what we have.
A million over. Okay.
Still at 19, it'll still be a million.
Okay. Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. I'll pay attention to people's eyes, Kelly.
I can't, she's hiding.
I talked to them yesterday. I'll hide behind Sandy, you can't see me. I talked to them yesterday. And collections are slow this time of year, and it's not, you know, it's not necessary. So come first of the year, then we can...
You save it up for Black Friday.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any further correspondence?
No.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Bid opening date changed from December 11th to December 18th at 10:30 a.m. for what? Which bid opening?
We had a pre-bid meeting last Thursday for the renovations to the federal building.
Okay.
It was determined at that time that the contractors might be able to give us a little better price if we waited a week. So we're going to move it from December 11 at 10:30 to December 18 at 10:30. That will give them, over the holidays, to look at the bids, make sure we're getting the best prices, and then bring that back to the commission your first meeting of January.
So that's, that's the bid on the Justice Center?
Yes.
Do we need a, move to amend from December 11th to December 18th, the pre-bid openings for the Justice Center?
At 10:30.
Second.
Yeah, 10:00, yes.
A motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
All of the contractors that appeared at the mandatory meeting will be notified by an addendum from the ceiling.
Very good. Okay, discussion of subdivision regulations and possibility of developing building codes.
Let me just sort of give a prelude. I asked Rich Wood, the county planner, to come to the meeting, and he did, and thank you. But I just want to give you a little refresher here on our subdivision regulations and the status. As you well know, we, we asked Rich to come up with a proposal, and then we sent him back again to come up with a joint proposal between bidders, and then through some discussion, we came up with an alternative proposal that I think was, was acceptable to him. And I think, I would hope it'd be acceptable to the commission. And let me just give you a brief description of that, and then Rich can comment on that. And this is just in regards to subdivision regulations. What we talked about was the possibility of Rich functioning as the planner, and when the subdivision regulations are in fact developed, that someone is going to have to be available to make sure that they're followed and enforced and, and everything else. So what we had talked about was actually not, not employing any of the bidders, but to do it ourselves in terms of the county planning, planner, but hiring someone who would assist in the development of those subdivision regulations in a temporary capacity. And then providing everything would follow through, maybe that person could be looked at in terms of regular employment, to be sort of the head up the implementation and the enforcement of the subdivision regulations. Which makes a lot of sense, having someone who would be knowledgeable about that. And then after the ordinance would be sort of fine tuned, then employing or using the university resources to review it for legal compliance. Also, we would have public hearings and seem to be the, I think consensus is that we can be assured that some developers will be there at a public hearing for an ordinance about subdivision regulations. So we're going to have all kinds of legal input, I'm sure. But Rich, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that, that sort of summarizes the discussion, that we just sort of had a brainstorming session, and then you presented for the planning commission. We would essentially look to get a contract employee with experience in subdivision regulations and administering subdivision regulations. And that would be, that would essentially be that for that position. They would work with the planning staff to draft the ordinance and the kind of forms that we would need and that kind of thing. Now, the idea is if those regulations were subsequently adopted, and this contract employee seemed to be, worked out well, and that, that could then be our subdivision plan review planner, who would be principally in charge of reviewing all the subdivisions and preparing them to either for administrative approval or for the planning commission. That part seems to work out. We talked about the legal review, and of course, we had already had an agreement that the WVU land use and sustainability group would look it over. Also, we have the ability to go to Phil, and if Phil feels that he needs, say, somebody who has expertise outside of him, we could do that too. So that kind of covers any sort of legal aspect. As far as input from everybody, not just the developers, but citizens, the, you know, farmers that outhole large tracts, no intention right now to subdivide, but want to know what might be down the road. Well, we have the, the public input is essentially multiple. One, I'm sure there will be articles, and we'll talk about it in the newspaper, we'll talk about it on the K and Jim Show, it's actually Talk of the Town, I think is their official name, but we will be on that. The planning commission will hold a public meeting on that and have people come in and tweak the ordinance based on the input we received at that point. So if somebody says, you know, this is, doesn't workable, well, we'll look at that issue and make it workable, that kind of thing. And then you have the formal public hearing that this body will have. And again, at that point, you could table any further action until we play around with it, get it exactly to your liking before you would actually vote on. So that's kind of what we're looking at along those lines. What that would mean then is that we would not contract with a consulting firm to do it. And then if that's the case, and that's what you decide, we probably need to reject any and all bids and do that in a formal way, so that we do that. Now, that is a option that we talked about, and it was brought up at the planning commission. That isn't saying that's what you should do, your, this body has to decide what they're going to do. I mean, all the things previously discussed are still on the table. But that was what the conversation we had at the last planning.
I believe it's a great compromise, and as I told Bill, that, you know, I'm comfortable with it, except in one area, where you say that WVU's going to review it, and then if needs be, to go out and get more legal help to verify.
No.
Okay.
They have, I mean...
Yeah, please.
The group, the institute at WVU had already agreed that they would look over this ordinance.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that they're wanting to do is come up with a model ordinance for all of West Virginia, and they'd kind of like to use this as a test bid for that. So that's, that was programmed before we started this process. And because there's such a lack of subdivision regulations statewide. So they're willing to do that as part and parcel of that. But as the county commission, and it's your ordinance, you can refer that to the assistant prosecuting attorney, who can review that for legal muster. And if at that point, Phil feels like he wants to bring in somebody with specific expertise in land use law or subdivision law or something like that, you have the option for him to go out and, and get that.
Okay. The only thing I would like to say is that if we do this, I would like, I clearly want to have someone with the expertise of land use law outside, only because I believe this is going to be, like you said, it's a model. I want it to make sure it, you know, it's withheld, upheld, upheld with, upheld with the, in the law. So that would be the only thing that I would ask, that we would be very careful about, and that's fine with me.
We would still have control over this until, till we would vote...
Then that would be fine.
...approve it to implement it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. We have to have a public hearing. There's nothing to prevent us from having written comment.
Right.
Written comment, period. There's nothing that says that we have to act after an initial public hearing. We can, we can delay it, and at that time, we need to refer, at that time, we might want to refer to someone else. You know, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of openings that, a lot of people don't realize, a public hearing is not the end all. A public hearing is the minimum. The statute says this is what you got to do as a minimum, but we're allowed to do all these other things.
Yeah. Well, the law requires you, as it does anytime you pass an ordinance, to hold a public hearing. That doesn't mean that you can't have public forums, public meetings, more than one public hearing, if you choose to. But legally, you have to have at least one public hearing.
We have in the past sometimes had public hearings in conjunction with our meeting, and then had an additional public hearing in the evening hours. And we may feel the need to do that, and we can do that. But I don't want to...
Go ahead.
You have any other comments? No, I'm about ready here to...
No, no. The only thing I was going to say, I think this is a very, very good, good approach. I feel very comfortable with this approach. The only thing that I bring up at this juncture, Rich, and Diane, maybe chime in on this. If you hire someone on a contract with the intention of moving them to full-time in the event the subdivision regulations become reality, which, which is a good possibility, do you have to advertise that position before you hire them as a contractor? Or do you have to, or do you, you just say, well, we'll give you a shot, and then we're going to advertise it later? I don't know. I'd like Diane chime in on that too.
Okay. I think what you're, just as, as a practical matter, because we're probably going to have to go through APA, American Planning Association, to find somebody that meets this. What you do is, we will advertise for a contract employee. We will make it clear that that is all that this entails.
Initially.
But that there is the possibility of future employment. I think what you'd have to do, if you did then subsequently hire this individual, is you'd have to advertise that position.
Twice.
Twice.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
Let me just suggest something. Rather than to look at this approach as from a, hire a contract employee, let's look at it from a standpoint of hiring a temporary employee. You know, the contract aspects of this present some different issues. Hiring a temporary employee in the announcement could vary, I think, within our rights to say, this is a temporary position, may develop into a full-time position.
Yeah, then you don't have to go through the formal...
Yeah, we don't have to advertise or anything other than for the position.
You would still have to, in that case, they would be an employee, they'd have to go through bookkeeping and all of that.
Sure, sure.
Right. But then your formal hiring and everything would be done once the regulations are done.
It's over with.
Have you, Ruth, that done?
I was just going to suggest that also, temporary, that could be, you could put a deadline of six months, or if you don't want to end it at a certain time period, just temporarily.
Temporarily.
And then put them on full-time if they work out. If they don't work out, then you can re-advertise for someone else.
Six-month option for additional months, and then...
Okay.
Sounds good.
What you, what you're going to want to do is make it clear to the employee, and make sure legally you have this right, that, you know, there's no guarantee of future employment.
No.
For two reasons. One, that presumes that you all are going to pass an ordinance. If you don't pass the ordinance, we don't need that as a permanent employee. And number two, you know, it really works kind of as a probationary period and trial period, and you may determine that, well, this employee just isn't exactly what you want for a permanent employee.
We could also call it a performance demonstration period, that the person that would be employed temporarily would have to demonstrate the skills to, to assist in the development of the ordinance, and demonstrate the ability to apply the requirements of the ordinance. I think there's plenty of justification for it. That being said, if, I hate to delay something that's been long needed in this county, and I would therefore, I guess, in one motions, make a motion that we reject all the bids that were previously submitted, and that part of that motion include the authorization for Rich Wood, the county planner, to proceed with the approach that we have just discussed in terms of the county planning office taking over the development and implementation of the subdivision ordinance, with the provision of hiring a temporary, to be determined, employee for a length of time. I think that's it.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Rich.
There's a second aspect to this one, the possibility of developing building codes, and I just want to mention to you why that's on there. That was discussed in the planning commission, and I said I'd bring it up, and so I'm bringing it up. And one of the things, this by no way should be viewed as... And one of the things, this by no way should be viewed as, we're going to implement building codes within the next 30 days or 90 days, but what I wanted to do was for the commission to give Rich the authorization to pursue developing a proposal with an itemized informative content that we would know exact costs, exact resources that would be needed, projections for an implementation if adopted, so that we could actually look at this objectively and see, it may not even be practical, it may not even be feasible, the resources required could be, the scales could be balanced that we don't need that once we get our subdivision regulations in. But I'd like to give him the go-ahead to look at adoption of national building codes as well as, I think there's a fire code and as well as electrical.
We have to adopt what the state has authorized.
Right, right.
There's the power and electrical and all of those. And it's really, what we had talked about was more sort of feasibility study or feasibility analysis to at least get some idea of what kind of timeframe we might be looking at, what the cost would be, what staffing might be. You know, one of the things that we talked about is physically, we have no place to put anybody if we were to try and go out tomorrow and hire somebody.
The other thing, too, is once we have a proposal in hand, I think it would be prudent for us to have a public hearing and then to let people have input and get a reaction from people as, we're looking at this proposal. We want your input, developers as well as the general public. It's something that needs looked at and can be either laid to rest or implemented. And I think we need that in view of the development that's going on in Monmouth County. And I forget who it was, but someone mentioned the other day that a call came in from the western end of the county about a housing development going to go in next to them, and they were concerned about. I said, that has to be historic. Someone in the western end of the county talking about regulations. But I think that's indicative of what's to come in Monmouth County. That's indicative of what's to come out to the western end of the county. But, you know, I would make a motion that we authorize him to at least pursue that and come up with a proposal to come back to the commission to consider.
I'll second. I mean, I think the more discussion on issues helps us make better decisions.
I'd like to point out a couple things. The state law requires that all buildings and all structures be built according to the codes that they've adopted, various building codes. The problem is, is they don't have any local enforcement. It's up to the county to adopt the local enforcement mechanism. To my knowledge, the only county that has done that has been Berkeley County. Berkeley County did that, I think, four or five years ago, and they adopted the state building code and set up an enforcement mechanism. It's also, and Rich, it probably wouldn't hurt to dig that out, it also, those building codes were also the center of one or two, one or two West Virginia Supreme Court cases where developers or other people tried to challenge that, challenge the code. So I thought that might be a good place to start with seeing what the Supreme Court said about it. I can't remember the exact issue, but I know they were challenged, and I read the case some time ago. I agree with the other two commissioners, though. The situation in the county is that people's opinions are changing. It used to be, I don't want anyone to tell anybody what they have to do with their property. Then it went to a phase of, I don't want anyone to tell anybody, I don't want anyone to tell me what I do to my property, I just want to be able to tell you what you can do with your property. Now it's gone to the phase that people are starting to realize, uh-oh, unless I accept some restrictions, I'm not going to keep that pigsty from the edge of my property. And I think that attitude is changing, and I think it's a good, I think it's a great idea that the commission gets out and here's what the people have to say on that.
Well, I think this commission's been very proactive on issues, and instead of waiting till we have a situation.
Problem.
We need to initiate, be proactive, and I think that's the character of this commission.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Keep piling it on, Rich. When you yell uncle.
Subdivision first.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I mean, realistically, we're talking about longer term for the, because there's budget implications and space implications. So even if the decision was, say philosophically made, that we want to pursue this, the logistics of it is still sometime down the road.
Before you leave, Rich, I want to bring up one other thing that was discussed, I think somewhat in the Planning Commission, but really never made it here, I don't think. But in terms of doing a, we talked about putting on the ballot about county-wide zoning and those kinds of things. And then through discussion, we thought that we would be better off to maybe employ a.
Polling.
Polling, polling firm that would not only poll the county, or at least a sampling, for county-wide zoning, but more specifically the cheat neck and cheat view areas, to see if, what the sediment is there about planning district zoning. And the Planning Commission is going to need some help with funding on that. And I guess what I'd like to do is say, I'd like to also authorize Rich to pursue that and come back to us with what a projected cost would cause the county for that polling.
Yeah, we were going to, I mean, this all came up after it was determined that you couldn't put it on the ballot.
Right.
And then somebody, I don't even remember exactly who on the commission, said, well, you know, you can get a statistically valid opinion poll. It's done all the time for political reasons and whatnot, and seemed reasonable to, that that might be an option, we just didn't know anybody had done it, but I'm sure there are some players, maybe not in West Virginia, but across the country have done that kind of thing.
Right.
And then at the last meeting, sort of said, well, you know, Patty, why don't you at least make some contact, see who does this, what kind of ballpark figures it would be? And that's kind of where we're at. I don't know what the cost would be, but I do know that with the polling firms, you know, that they can get within 2%, 3% of statistically accurate just from doing a relatively small sample size, and so that would at least give some guidance. You know, if it comes down 50/50, well, you know, who knows? But if it's 70/40, I mean, 70/30 somewhere, then you could at least have a sense of what's out there in the county, or in the case of Cheat Lake, Cheat Neck, what might be the view in that thing. And if it's, you know, if it's $150,000 to do, well, maybe we should do something else. I'm guessing it's quite a bit less than that, but we don't know what it would cost.
I understand, too, that the university may have something similar as a service, so we need to contact them. But the other thing to keep in mind is, is that we could also add to that primary questions, county-wide zoning, cheat neck, cheat lake, if there's another issue that we want to get a reading on from the county, we could add some other questions to that.
Building codes.
Sure, building codes, five commissioners, I mean, we can, we don't want to make a laundry list, but I'm sure, I'm sure whoever we would look at in terms of conducting this would tell us, give us some insight in terms of how many items do you really want to put on here and that kind of thing. But what I'm asking for is just to endorse that the.
Endorse the concept.
Endorse the concept and provide support to Richwood and Planning Commission to pursue that and come back to us for a proposal.
The motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I think it's a good idea, and it should be substantial, Lance. These candidates do surveys on stuff all the time when they're, and they can get statistically accurate. I think it's a good idea. The statute specifically prohibits us from using elections for opinion polls, so this is our only other, this is our only other option, and it's logical, no matter what the issue might be, that our Planning Commission should lead the forefront. So I think it's a good idea. I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. You're authorized.
Thank you. Anything else?
We'll try to pile a few more things on. You're not close to yelling uncle yet, so. We appreciate your work, Rich.
We're not going to put any more straw on the wagon.
Can we clarify the two funds?
Yes.
Well, one of them just walked out, I think.
Yeah, but I'll do a formal letter and do that.
Okay, appointments to board. You got any board appointments this week?
Okay, are we ready to do Mason's camp muffling?
Yes.
Camp muffling, okay. We've advertised, we've accepted applications, we've interviewed. I would recommend the following. Ed Hawkins, one-year term beginning November 20, 2014, today until the 2014. Jeff Orndorf till November 20, 2015. Gary Ben Hall, November of 2015. William Randy Moore, November of 16, and Gary Hirschman, November of 16.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Any further appointments to board?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to new business, restoration of $1,100 to Child Advocacy Center, just for the people that may not recall, we basically did a 5% cut across the board. There were some exceptions, but we basically, 5% cut. We looked for various things. Child Advocacy Center came in last week, talked to us, and we had said that, we had said repeatedly, all of us had said during the cuts, that if something jumped out or something created undue hardship to come before us, and there were a number of people that did come before us and we restored it. Child Advocacy Center came last week and we believe that, or I'll speak for myself, I believe that did create a hardship by reducing them that 5%, so I was hoping we could restore the $1,100 to them that was a result of that 5% cut.
I'll move that we restore that.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Thank you. Petition to appoint sheriff to administer estate of Robert Lee Anderson.
You may want to check that name because I've got a court order in reference to, I believe, if we're talking about the same person, I think the last name is Robinson.
Yeah, it is. It's a Rob, Theo Robinson.
Oh, okay. The agenda says Anderson.
Yes, it is.
You got it, but does that, does that create a problem since it's the wrong, wrong name on the agenda?
No.
The agenda's supposed to give, so when, so when you say that you're going to fire Bill Bartolo and you decide instead of firing Eldon Callan, you're saying that's all right, it doesn't matter?
I think that since there's legal implications, I think we should reschedule it for next Wednesday.
With the proper date.
With the proper date, yeah.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to cause any great problems, but we just need to make sure we dot the i and cross the t.
This will probably also be an estate, and I'm assuming nothing's going to change when I'll get assigned it, but I would ask also that a fiduciary officer be assigned, because my understanding is the estate has a value over $100,000.
Okay.
I think Kerry's been doing that, hasn't she? Kerry's office signing fiduciaries?
She has, as long as you all say yes. Go ahead.
We can do that right now, even without.
We can move, yeah.
Assignment. We can direct the fiduciary commissioner to be appointed.
Move, so move.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Even though you're assigning the estate next week to.
Right, yeah, well, we can always, there's certain standards that fiduciary commissioners are automatically appointed by the clerk in vacation or whatever they call them, basically in their office session, but we have the power to assign any, any estate to a fiduciary commissioner. Now, that fiduciary commissioner, of course, just decides disputes. We still need to sign, assign it to the sheriff as the administrator de bonus or whatever it's called.
You don't get any.
De bonus, no?
No, I understand there was one of the heirs, this son that wanted to be assigned but couldn't be bonded because of the bond being so much.
The high bond.
And I know that's one of the things the County Clarks Association is addressing this year in the legislatures, to allow immediate family to be appointed as executors or executrix of estates without posting the bond. Some people put it in the wills.
Yeah, most people, if property draft will put it in the will, that they won't be required to be bonded.
I hope that passes.
I hope it does, too, because that's a, that's a problem. Okay, we'll have to delay that until we get the right name on the agenda. Okay, any further new business?
Yeah, I'll, no, go ahead.
Well, I was going to do county commissioners report afterwards, but.
I want to make a motion with what I have talked.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I received a call from Triune Halli seniors, and we cut their budget $500 from 2,000 to 1,500, and there was a request that we consider restoring that $500 for the purpose of paying electric bills. And I therefore would like to make a motion that we do restore that $500, we can afford it out of our budget and it's going to a worthy cause.
I'll second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
I was going to bring this on the new business rather than the committee.
Oh, well, that's fine.
Yeah, let me hand, one for each of you and one for Diane. I didn't want this as part of the record, this actual document, okay? That's what. Basically, and I want to clarify it very carefully, I'm not for or against this proposal. What happened on the Rails to Trails, we were informed by the friends of.
Decatur Creek.
Thank you. Friends of Decatur Creek came and wanted us to be aware that there was going to be a underground Class II injection well for gas drilling waste in Preston County in the Decatur Creek watershed, and it was also proposed right, right by and right next to the Rails to Trails. And Energy Corporation of America was planning to do this. I made it very clear that I was going to bring it back to the other county commissioners because we really didn't know anything about it. Now, it's supposed to be built in Mason Town, so the question would be, why are we worried about in Mon County? And the reason is twofold. One, because of the Rails to Trails and the Cheat River, but the second was the possibility that Star City would be used as the barge would be dropping off the material, whether waste or toxic waste, we don't know, and then driven through Mon County to this site. So again, we don't know any, you know, I don't know yea or nay, but in the interim this week, I've received four different letters, then even ECA wrote to me, which said, do we have any questions? So what I would like to request is just an inquiry letter to the Preston, yeah, it'd be Preston County Commissioners, and I have some of the questions here that I could give, whether they're there, basically getting more information. Once we have the information, then I'd like to have it put on the work session at the same time that letter that we, that Mr. Gassins had requested, to get all the information. I don't have enough information. I do not want to make everyone afraid that this, you know, it's a toxic waste situation or not. I don't know enough about it, but I thought it was something that would have impact to Mon County, to the citizens, and also to the Rails to Trails. And I'm going to throw it out to you, you know I've. And I'm going to throw it out to you, you know I sent you the other letters, and again, I want it very clear, I'm not pro or against it, I'm pro finding out more information and inquiry, and if anyone wants to add to that letter, that, that's fine.
I, I support that. I don't, I don't think we have enough information in terms of what impact, if that in fact takes place in Preston County, what impact that's going to have on Monongahia County, both in terms of use as well as possible consequences.
Right.
So I would support seeking additional information.
Now, do we need a motion to send the letter or can I just?
No, we'll need a motion to send the letter.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead, what Bill said there, that everything flows downhill, and Mason Town's uphill. So you do something in Mason Town, that Decker's Creek's coming down, comes down here, so, you know, when I was little and Decker's Creek was running yellow and, yellow and red, it was, it wasn't Monongahia mines that were doing that, those were Preston County mines that were doing that. So that's a good point. Another thing that I think would be beneficial and sort of in line with what we've been talking about, and I've been talking about in particular, about more cooperation between the counties and the, everything not running out of Charleston. The counties, us in Wetzel County, us in Preston County, we have issues that we ought to be able to get together, and we, the legislature ought to authorize us to resolve those issues that are unique to our area. This might be a good, good opportunity as well to, to ask if we can hold joint commission work session with all, with all the commissioners.
I think it's a great idea.
So, one, we get the same answers, and, two, we can share common concerns on this, see their perspective and our perspective.
And I want to add, the reason why I brought this up so quickly was I was under the assumption at the meeting that we were talking two years away with EPA and all the rulings, but actually they're planning to do the operation, begin the operation in summer of 2014, which is only six months away, which all of a sudden caused me to ask you all to expedite this. I mean, I think it's real important, and like number nine, the question we have is, will the wastewater be coming from states other than West Virginia, which I never even thought of? I do not want us to become the dumping ground from, I don't want to be, I have to be careful I say that. But, and again, we're not for or against it, but I love, I really like your idea of having the two commissions together and then having everyone there at the same time, both sides, so we can get the information. So I will-
I will have the same information.
Yes, so I will move that we send a letter of request to meet with the Preston County Commission and to try and-
Jointly.
Jointly, and to see, to get some clarification on this particular situation.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, reports from county commissioners.
I'd like to request Ben to, whoever it is puts the time of our meetings in the newspaper, that we no longer meet at 1:00, we meet at 10:00.
I actually told him that last week, so I'll actually go in and do it myself.
Do we need a motion to write him a letter?
I'd say if I don't get it done this week, then the motion.
The, the other thing, there was three of us that provided testimony at the Public Service Commission hearing on Scotts Run Public Service District in MUB, and I just wanted to make a comment that I thought we got treated very well. We got moved up on the agenda so that we didn't have to wait throughout the whole proceeding. In fact, I'm assuming that all of us got a thank you card from the attorney in terms of our participation, and we should be getting an answer. Hopefully it doesn't take Public Service Commission too many years to come out with a decision. But I thought it went well, it was informative. And my observation was it was basically the same group of what they call interveners sitting in the audience that we've had here during our discussions regarding that process. But I thought it went well.
Tom?
Yeah, just quickly, I was fortunate to represent the commission at Morgantown High School's Veterans Assembly, which was exceptional. And I have a pin I have in my office for the two of you that they wanted to give, but they also wanted to thank that we were their representative there. I did want to say that it was extremely moving when they showed the 16 students from Morgantown High School who had died in Vietnam and put their names and read them, and I think that shocked the students because they were talking about, hey, they were talking about going to the homecoming dance and this and that, and it really had a major effect. And along with what you had said earlier, 50 years ago was probably one of the, was being in sixth grade, I remember exactly being in the music class when President Kennedy was, it was announced that he had died and they sent us all home, and I believe it had a major effect on this country, and I just hope we all realize, you know, what, how it really changed America and why I'm, I and the three of us are so supportive of the Constitution and making sure everyone has a say in government, and I think it really had a major turning point. That's it.
Thank you. The, to, to add to what Bill said, what was interesting about the, the hearing, which I appreciated regardless of all the banter and everything out in the public, is that the administrative law judge emphasized that the county commission did exactly what they were legally required and able to do in this situation, and, and had to emphasize that a couple times, that, so, I just wanted to point that out. I mean, the county commission has been, as I said, at that, the endorsement or the induction of the new lawyers last Friday, Sheriff, County Commission, one of those that someone's always going to be mad at for one reason or another, someone is going to be mad, and a lot of times, everyone's mad at us for one reason or another. But, but I was appreciative of that. I did want to mention there was, was an induction ceremony, very nice ceremony. The, when I, when I entered the bar, I wish they had a local ceremony like that. They, they go back, they're going back to one, they say, 1972, I think-
The last one?
Yeah, Jacques, Louis, 74, yeah. The last time they had a formal induction into the bar of new, of new lawyers was 74. And that, the, the, so in an attempt to, as part of the civility and professionalism goals and committee of the bar, they, they've adopted that. They thought, they emphasized the tradition and honor and integrity and collegiality, all goes hand in hand, and that these traditions, that's why they adopted these new traditions. So, so I was glad to see not only that they had lawyers, but they had every office was invited and was represented to talk, so I gave them my, my two cents. I, I think it's, I think it's very, very important that, that the lawyers, with the number of lawyers we're getting in town, it's sort of going to go hand in hand with, with growth, but, but that, you know, when I, well, I was one of the last classes that was commissioned in the United States Regular Army when you actually were commissioned as an officer and a gentleman.
Hmm, I guess we all make mistakes.
I was going to say, what happened? Is that why they stopped it after you?
Well, after that, they did stop.
I'm only joking, I'm only joking.
I'm sorry, you opened your cell phone, that was too easy.
Okay, well, I was tied it in, and they did away with that. Now, you're just commissioned as an officer, not an officer and a gentleman after I was commissioned, but they did away with that tradition, they brought back this tradition, and I think that, that will, hopefully, some of the egos that, that come with being a young lawyer, I loved what Judge Tucker said, that graduating from law school is merely as a learner's permit, it doesn't make you a lawyer, and I really liked that, I thought that was right on. So, so I did that and spoke on behalf of the commission and welcomed the new, new attorneys. The, there was a issue, there's, there's another issue going on, and we'll talk about it some more, that's what this meeting was here. I, I didn't, I didn't really understand the full gist of this meeting. Basically, what this morning meeting was, was the DNR, is this plan to put hydroelectric power on, on our dams by this company. And I guess this has been going on, that this group has met with, with the city of Morgantown, that the actual company has met with the city of Morgantown. What this meeting was this morning was really to, was involved the DNR people, the city people, the Upper Mon River Valley Association, and they wanted to involve the commission in their, the permit is coming up, and we have talked until January 8th to submit comments on that. So this was sort of a wrap session about, well, should we try to join together, should we have our own comments, should we have separate comments, separate position, and, and so the, the, there are no decisions in the group, it was just some of the concerns and problems. So we'll probably have a follow-up meeting with Bo Park and with Jeff McCorsky, probably in a work session between now and comment period, to talk about whether we really want to have a joint position on, on that or not.
There was a gentleman that talked to me before they, they left after their meeting broke up, and he sounded to me like what he was looking for is that the Army Corps of Engineers need a governmental sponsor for the waterway, and, and he was looking to the county commission as trying to communicate to the Board of Engineer-
Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, that we would be willing to serve in that function, and what we would do is we would sort of be a go-between, between contributors in terms of contributions to further develop the waterways.
Yeah, I was going to talk about more, more-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I was going to talk more about that in work session.
Oh, okay.
In, in a draft letter that we can work on, but yeah, that, that's part of it. This has to do, and they're sort of all interconnected, the improvement of the waterways and opening the waterways, this has to do with the placement of a power plant on the Opakiska Point Marion, that Hildebrand is a different company, on each one of these dams, and so it was like, we could study it more, we'll study it more detail later, but it was like Opakiska shouldn't be a problem because there's nothing there, but down here in Morgantown, you got, you got none of the rails, trails and all that.
I, I think too that in, as far as development, they need to look beyond the dam. Town of Granville has plans to develop the riverfront. I think Westover has some riverfront each, certainly Morgantown, the waterfront from an economic development standpoint and recreational standpoint for the community. The waterways need to stay open, and they need to be usable to get that development. And I, personally, I don't have any trouble supporting that concept.
Great. Okay, that's, that's my, that was basically my report. Okay, Sheriff, you have anything further?
Two things. Monday, Kelly and I attended the Governor's Intergovernmental Advisory Board meeting in Charleston at the, at the Capitol. Very informative. They talked basically about some upcoming budgetary concerns and some things that are going well, things that aren't, what they're expecting in the next two or three years, what they're looking at as far as revenue generating programs and things like that. So it was pretty informative, and then we got to talk about some legislative agenda issues that each individual member association of the West Virginia Association of Counties has on their individual agendas. So it was a good meeting, you know, it was a long day. We ended up then going to the other areas in the Capitol, visiting with some legislators, and I think we, we ended up getting back home Monday night around 9 o'clock, so it was, it was a very long but fruitful day, and we enjoyed that. Along with what Commissioner Bloom was talking about with the Veterans Day celebration, I did go, and Ben, very fortunate for the last 10 years to be asked to be a speaker at IMTEC's Veterans Day ceremony, it's very well attended, and I think it's just, it's a wonderful thing that the high school got involved and did something this year, that these other organizations that IMTEC has been doing this for probably 15 years that I know of. And it's something, like I said that day, that we shouldn't only celebrate and acknowledge one day a year, but we should celebrate and acknowledge our veterans every day of the year. And, but I was very honored to be a part of it again.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, you have anything for us?
Nothing to report.
Sandy, you have anything?
Just to let you know that you all did pass the 457 Retirement Plus several months ago, the interest is strong among county employees. We're planning on doing some more meetings with the Sheriff's Department and with MECA 911 over the next month or two, and Treasurer Perdidos thanks you for being a part of it.
Thank you, and then please pass our thanks on to him for putting up a good proof.
Thank you.
Okay, comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Diane, you have anything?
I just had one other thing to advise you, that the Public Service Commission has your request to not be the franchising authority for cable. It's final.
Well, that took us some hoops to get rid of that.
Yes, I'm glad to be here.
Yeah, Renata, you have anything further?
No.
Jim, do you have anything? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We're adjourned.